Okay. Thank you. Yeah, he's just, there was some stuff on the Zoom computer. That Mark was taking care of.
The volume is off. Are we still going to be able to hear people?
It can see you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, great.
All right, we're asked to do the flag salute, so if we stand and do that real quick. Bled you ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spend too much time on the Marines. I always want to say, "Oh yeah." Okay. Okay. The planning board will come to meeting for a public meeting on Tuesday, January 25th. Board business, first thing, acceptance of the minutes from our last meeting, January 11th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do you want to appoint Mr.?
Thank you. And I would like to appoint Mr. Marchand in place of Mr. White tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, acceptance of the minutes, any other administrative stuff for that? Okay, of January 11th, 2022. Any corrections? I have just one.
I sent out a corrected set on Monday. There were three typos.
Okay, was one her band account to her bank account?
Yes.
Okay, that was the only thing I.
One was Mr. Ms. And one was... It was like the band. It was a word, it just, it wasn't the right one.
Okay.
It was "the" instead of "there."
Okay. If no further corrections, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Okay. Motion.
Motion second.
Be the rule.
And call the role, please, and we do have Ms. White.
Yep.
Joining us via Zoom.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Marchand.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Next is the NEPR manifest. If I could have a motion to approve to pay the NEPR manifest in the amount of $199.96.
Is this Barbara so moved?
Thank you.
I would just like to ask one question.
Sure.
That I looked on that, and it's just so, this is for transparency. The one you had listed, Jim, for traveling expense to the registry.
Right.
For two different things. For, it was, um... What was it, like five something each?
Five dollars and 16 cents each. That was, I did two recordings up on one trip.
That's what I wanted, is put that on in public, so it goes in the minutes.
And the other one was just one item.
Exactly. So I'm just doing that, so it's put in the record, so that's why it's the way it is.
And just, you guys don't need to necessarily know this, but I get a biweekly, I guess it is, statement of all Jim's hours and stuff like that, that I have to review and approve, and then it goes to the bookkeeper.
No, I get, you get it, but I'm saying for the public, so they know.
Okay. They're all public documents.
Right.
But thank you for asking that. Okay.
Who seconded?
Nobody. So we'll make a motion. I make a motion to accept?
Barbara.
Barbara made the motion.
Okay.
You seconded it.
I'll second it, then.
And call the role when you're ready, Jim.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Marchand.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next thing, board communications. This is kind of a general topic. This was initially brought by Mr. Marchand to talk about, I... Correct me if I'm wrong. Is this to start talking about what we talked about for roles of the AA, or is... Well, how about if I give you the floor and you?
I just, for overall communications about things that transpires on the board, because I know there have been, you know, issues, and I can't remember every single one of them over the course of this year, that I come to the meeting, and then all of a sudden I hear something that I have no knowledge about what took place and what went on. So I think that there, I would think that it would be better for the board in general and all, for everybody to start being on the same page, so that when we show up at a meeting, it's like, you know, we're all together on the things, and nobody's sit there, you know, wondering what's going on and trying to play catch-up on matters that happened in general, like what happened last week, you know what I mean? That, like, I came in that day, and I was like flabbergasted and everything, you know, overwhelmed, I should say, with what was taking place.
Yeah.
But, so, I just, you know what I mean? And that maybe, I feel that you might, in that transparency part, might want, who is chairman, put out a few more emails to the board. Not that we have to discuss in detail or anything what's going on, but in general, just anything that's going to be taking place, and that what we might want to put on the agenda to cover, instead of just some of the basics.
Okay. From a general, I'm going to have Jen, if you can, Jen, talk about kind of the putting a lot of information out to the board, and where the chair, vice chair needs to draw the line, something about that. What are your thoughts on that? I know this.
Well, Jen, I mean, there's different types of communication you're going to get as a planning board member. Obviously, all application material should be something that you get, whether it's the link via the website or direct email, all the board members should have access to the same information about any application. I mean, something that's along the lines of a legal question, ultimately, the board would have to have a full say, but if it's a question about whether, you know, having the attorney maybe attend a meeting, sometimes that's a rule a chair, vice chair will take, you know, sort of scheduling, like if there's a need to figure out if there will be a quorum of the board. Sometimes some of the background information may not be communicated to the entire board about options for sort of procedural items. There are some cases where there could be information out there, and it's not necessarily for the chair, vice chair, but where the administrative assistant or I may have communications with a potential applicant that may not necessarily get communicated to the board, but it would still be a public document. My email is public, Jim's email is public, so that may not always get directly sent to the board if it's before an application has actually occurred. So there's a lot of levels there. Might not be the exact answer to some of Mr. Marchand's questions, but that's the general, is that it kind of depends. More administrative things typically don't need to go to the entire board.
Can I? I'm going to ask one quick question of Jen. Now, my understanding, like, there's something, say, about an application, that you and the AA may talk about with the applicant that is actually inappropriate for you to even bring to me. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
So I don't prejudge in any way?
Correct. If it's, you know, if it's a scheduling type thing, then that's a little bit, that's more administrative, but if it's background information on an application before it's actually been formally applied to, it's better for them to be actually communicating with staff, or some planning boards have a designated planning board member serve in that role, to be doing that communication. But if that's the case, that planning board member, then during the active application would have to accuse themselves, because they have prior information that the rest of the board may not be privy to.
Right, so we wouldn't want to sit and vote on whatever transpires and takes place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So those kind of things. Now, and I'm going to have this discussion going for a while, so.
And I guess one of the concerns about, sorry, this is loud. Having too much communication is the perception that we're having non-public hearings or discussions without notice to the public.
Yes.
Even if, so I emailed the three of you, myself included, and we start providing our opinion or commenting on an application, personnel, anything, it then, although it may seem harmless, so that we're all on the same page, it could inadvertently be a non-public meeting that was not advertised.
Right. That's an issue that, well, go ahead, Jen.
Kind of along those lines, sometime, even if, as board members, if there was an active application before you, and you, or even before the application came in, but you knew about something coming in, if you comment on, say, Facebook, that is prejudging, and that could throw any approval or disapproval into legal jeopardy if it were to be challenged. It's happened in other communities, certainly.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not even just the email, it's other things as well.
Part of what you're saying, Jen, and what Dennis was saying, and that's part of what I'm getting to, is that I would like it to come to the board and be done in public, you know what I mean? And some, a little bit more of this, what's going on, that we can address in public in the meetings, to keep everybody up to date in the flow of what's going on, so that it's not all of a sudden we just come in and we're sitting here, and then boom, 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 and we're sitting in front of everybody.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I think it would just help the flow, would help everybody be more on the same page as to what's going on.
Yeah.
With matters. It's not that we want to.
I would like to find a way, now, I'm just going to address, because you started with it, and I don't want to come across as trying to shoot down your discussions, because I want to improve all this communication. The example of our last meeting was kind of tricky, because I didn't receive the information until that morning.
Right.
And the way the information was given to me, I was not allowed to share it up until the end. So that was, it's hard when you have non-public coming from non-public and things like that. So that was an extreme case. If I had my way, I would have had all those documents sent out to everybody.
Right.
Now, what we have to do, and what was mentioned, what Dennis mentioned, there's a reason, like, on our email, there's the planning board members, which is a very tricky one to use. Typically, and the way, when I came into this role, and initially, that was only used by the AA, and if I had something to, that I wanted to get to you guys, I would send to him, he would send that out, and he'd basically BCC, blind CC, so you couldn't talk to each other.
Right.
Because as soon as people start talking, we've broken the law.
Right.
It's, you know, that's just the simple answer. So that's a tricky one, and I've noticed lately with some of this, that, and I've done it too, I'm not going to say never use that, use it wisely, and please, if you do that, do it under the BCC, the blind, so nobody can reply on that thread. Because that, like Jen said, if we're talking about a case, and that, and we create a quorum, even by mistake, even, even four days apart, somebody answering an email or something, but if it's on that same topic, we've just put the town in jeopardy for, you know, for a case, say.
Right.
So that's the tricky one. Other things on communication, because, well, recently, I've started passing more stuff to Dennis as the vice chair, and I wanted to have a discussion with you sometime about, how much do you want to get? Because there's a lot of things, particularly since some of the issues that were talked about last time, they came up when I first, well, they've been coming up forever.
Yeah.
But they came up in my lap soon after I took over chair. So a lot of the correspondence that typically Jim wouldn't share with me, because there was no need to, he's shared everything with me. Anything to do with that area of town.
Right.
And then some other things, just so we have that paper trail, and really, I look at it so the town and the administrative system is not put into a corner without any, anybody else knowing what's going on, because as long as I know what's going on and see it, it's harder to make false claims.
Right.
So that's one thing.
That creates that transparency for that, so it's there and it's out in the open, and it's all, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
And to answer your question.
Can I offer one?
Go ahead, Jen.
Why don't you go ahead, Dennis, I think mine's probably a different.
I was going to say, another 50 emails a day, it doesn't, you could just send them to me.
Yeah.
It doesn't affect my.
Are you reading them?
I do read them.
Okay.
I don't respond, although I did respond to Jen's email today. But I do actually read them.
Okay.
That's the one email I've responded to. And it was, "Thank you."
Okay.
Oh, I can just, I can let you know, 99% of the emails that I get on a regular daily basis are which application do I use? You know, most people don't, they're very simple informational, they can be answered. However, I don't send them to every, I don't send them to board members, I don't even send them to the chair, because I try to protect you guys from being called, not being impartial.
Yeah. What, basically what Jen said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
99% of all of that, the chair hears, we had a write-to-know request, it was a very simple request, documents already existed, I let the chair know that I was, you know, handling it. The entire board didn't need to do that, because in order to do that, I think we'd probably have to do another write, another non-public session in order to disclose the name of the person who requested the information.
Yeah, and then that starts becoming borderline, having too much information passed out there.
Yeah.
I mean, it was a very simple request, they asked for two documents, they got two documents. They got two documents via certified mail, which is how we send all write-to-know requests, and now we just have to wait and see if they ever pay the bill. But other than that, there's not a major amount of communications that go through the office. It's mostly paperwork.
Okay, good. Did you have something else, Jen?
Yeah, this is just in, in general, usually, board members, once there's an active application, if any board member ever has a question for me about aspects of an application, sort of the technical aspect, my review, you guys can always communicate with me directly, because that's not, that doesn't constitute a meeting, and if you, if you need further explanation about something, or you looked at something and have a question, that you can always do. I just put that out there in case that ever comes up.
Yeah, that's good to remember, and I may not have mentioned that or pushed that enough. As soon as, basically, as soon as that application is accepted, essentially, when Jim sends out the email.
Right.
Saying the application is posted on the website, that same email that notifies all the, all the department heads, that it's there, you and I have, that's really the first time I see it also, and it should be. That's when I see it, so yes, if you have a question, if anybody has questions, they can reach out to.
Then at that point, it's safe to go ahead and.
Yeah.
And ask and discuss.
To Jen. I would not, don't do a.
No, no.
Planning board members asking it, no. One-on-one with Jen?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you can bring that information to the meeting.
Right.
And it would be great, but yeah.
Yeah, typically, if a board member emails me, or has a phone call conversation with me, I'll usually get the summary information at the next meeting, so that that's, everybody's having that information, but that's typically how that would get handled.
Okay. Barbara, do you have anything you'd like to throw in here at this point?
I just wanted to say that the flow of information that I have received, you know, via email, about what's going on with, you know, the different meetings, the stuff that's going on in the meeting, has been fine. I mean, I've been, I've been knowing what's going to be discussed before, even before, sometimes even before we get our agenda, because I can see some of the information that's coming through, so that at least I know what's going to be on the agenda. But can I just say something about non-public real quick?
Please.
Okay. I just wanted to remind the board members that anything in non-public is never supposed to be talked outside of this meeting, that any non-public meeting, and any information that you may receive to review for any non-public should never be shared with anybody else and really protected. And maybe after the non-public meeting is over, maybe you could shred it or something, because that's all privileged information, and the board has to be really careful to not talk to outside people about it, not talking among, not talking amongst yourselves, even if you've been in a non-public session and everything's been finished, you still can't talk about it afterwards.
Yes. Thank you for that reminder, and that, that would have been a good idea for me to do at our last non-public, was to collect a certain document.
Right.
Now, do those documents, can they, should they be attached to the minutes in the sealed, with the sealed minutes?
They are.
Okay, all right, because I have something tonight I want to do that with, too.
I, yes, I did send them to Barbara. I sent her a hard copy.
Perfect.
An electronic copy.
Okay.
Actually, along those same lines, is it possible, Jim? I know you typically send out hard copies, can, at least for myself, can we just go electronic and save the town a few bucks?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to.
Can you stop sending me paper copies, just?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it saves you time and saves the town some money, and if it's on my computer that way, I can't lose it and not forget it.
However, do you still want plan sets and what have you?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I just, that stuff you get, the agenda and the minutes you always will get on Thursday via email. Sometimes it's Friday, it depends on how Thursday goes. Things like the applications, the first person who said, "No, I don't want a paper copy of the application," only because it is so, it gives you something to make notes on, and, but if you don't, you know, there's, I don't mind not sending you, you know, some sheets of paper, I just.
I'm trying to save a little bit of everybody's time and money.
You know, it's one less, you know, one less tree that needs to be chopped down.
Yeah, we could grow more.
Okay.
And what I'll do, is I will send out an email, asking anybody that wants.
Yeah, I know we did that in the past, and then, sorry, I would say anybody here, anybody who's on Zoom, if you want, and are able to get some or all of the packets, just electronically, just let Jim know, and.
Actually, I've done that annually after elections, especially if there's new people.
Okay.
I remind people of what the, I no longer send out, we get a blast from the New Hampshire Municipal Association of, you know, every little thing that they're doing. You guys get to sign up for that. I don't forward that anymore, because people were complaining that it was flooding their, you know, their mailboxes, or it was ending up in spam.
Okay.
And I'll just, in March, Mr. Moran, can you survive a couple more months getting?
That's fine.
Okay. I was just going to say, in March, when, you know, I'll really push for it.
Okay, thank you. I would like to keep this conversation going in the future, so whether we, so I would say possibly for our next meeting, or any meetings, if anybody on the board has ideas for better communications. Right now, we're talking about within the board communications. I'm going to address one item here soon, which is outside of the board communications, but let me know. We'll always, we can put another one on the agenda, easy enough, because this is a, I think, this topic is a good point of discussion to revisit whenever we can.
Yeah, exactly.
Things like that happened before the last meeting. I'll do my best to get as much information as I can to everybody, and maybe when I have something that comes like that, I will at least let you know that something big is coming, and I can't share it, and maybe that at least could, could help, but, okay. Under the same board communications, I think you all saw the email with the fire chief, and it was that same discussion again about, he wasn't going to approve something, and we had gotten the legal opinion. I'm not going to go into what he said, other than, Jen, thank you for that nice succinct letter that went out, and I think everybody got it. What I did want to mention is I did have a discussion with Mr. Donovan, the new code enforcement and building inspector, today. He's on vacation, but he was nice enough to call me from a deck somewhere in Mexico. We had a nice chat. I was able to fill him, fill him in on what our procedure is.
Yeah.
And just to renew everybody's information on that, as soon as we get a, or Jim gets a application in, that goes up on the website, he not only notifies all the department heads via email, but we've included the actual link, so all they have to do is click on it now to go to it. And then I explained to him about, we can't, state law does not allow us to require any, anything from the applicant, where they contact the fire chief, or the road agent, or anything. So we had a nice discussion, brought him up to speed with that. He got all the emails from myself and from Jen, and he has some good ideas where he's going to work with, or potentially work with the fire chief, when these new applications come in, where they can take a look at it, and then maybe reach out to applicants without any requirements, but reach out, get the information that maybe he wants ahead of time, so then he can either let us know his concerns, or come to the actual hearing and express those concerns. And then Mr. Donovan fully understands that we're just zoning, so once it leaves us, the occupancy permits, the everything else is his department, and, you know.
That's the other part that I was going to bring up, that external that you were just talking about.
Okay.
So, so when that happens, Jen, right, so if they do have an issue, and they want to bring it up, and they have things that they would like to see done, they can't put the restriction on, is that what we're saying?
Yes, they can't put any requirements, we can't put any requirements that they meet any requirements from the building inspector or the fire department.
Right.
Prior to us hearing the case.
So if they, if they notify us, whether it's the fire chief, the building inspector, or something like that, saying that they have an issue with what's going on, at that point, we have a legal right to not take acceptance of said matter until that's done?
Not.
I'm going to let Jen answer that.
Not quite. So there's a couple, so you, as the planning board, you cannot require that someone go and talk to the police, I'm sorry, the fire department or the building department before they apply to a planning board application. You cannot require that. You can encourage it, but you can't require it. Once the application is under the planning board's jurisdiction, you certainly can request and hopefully receive comment from fire, or police, or building, or the road agent, anybody in town, conservation commission, hopefully they will provide comment, and that's one of the reasons Jim sends out the link to the other department, is to solicit comments, so that while the planning board is actively acting upon that application, you can incorporate some of those comments into the design. A good example is a cul-de-sac. Is the cul-de-sac going to be big enough to accommodate the fire truck? That is a common one, fire departments like to get. That is a common one, fire departments like to get in with planning deport, planning boards during an active application. If the app, if the planning board then goes to approve an application, you can put a condition on it that says you have to meet the fire and building code before, as part of a condition of our approval. So there's a couple of places where the fire department and police, and fire and building can be part of the process, but you have very little teeth as the planning board, except to put it in as a condition of approval that they meet the fire code and building code. That is the only thing that you can really do.
Okay. And those, that standard, what we put into our notice of decision is basically as far as we can go, correct?
Yes.
That's as much teeth we have as what we put in there. Yeah.
But the fire department and the building department still have all of the ability to not give a permit that they have jurisdiction over if whatever they, whatever the case is, doesn't meet the fire code or the building code. They can simply say no.
Yeah. So it's almost like somebody leaves here with a conditional approval. If they don't meet those conditions, it's from building or fire. It's almost the same as if somebody never even came here and just started doing their thing without our approval. Falls into the same thing. It's the code enforcement or the, in the fire department.
I guess for like, for an example is, say you're building a building and you came to us for a, this is more of a zoning, but a variance on a setback. It's for zoning. But, um, we gave you approval and then you go for your building permit and they say, wait a second, you need a sprinkler system and there's no room. You had to put a cistern and it's within the yard setback. You would have to come back to us for an amendment to your approval to then go get your building permit, to build your building and your fire, your cistern for sprinkler system. So we can't hold them up for what's under our jurisdiction, even though that they may or may not be able to get a building permit. Cause we don't see like a structural design and the building inspector may say, wait a second, you have a 35-foot span. I want a stamp on this to confirm that it's structurally sound. Or whatever. But we don't look at that.
Yeah.
And we can't, I, well, some incorrect, we don't require structural designs. We require architectural drawings.
No, we can't. We, we wanted, we essentially, what does it look like? Elevation, you know?
The example you just gave is a really good reason why trying to get comments from the building department, the fire department, the police, while you are actively working on an application is really important. So their, their comments are very valuable for you guys, but you can't require them to comment, the same way you can't require an applicant to go to them ahead of time.
And like, right, Haverhill, our neighboring town, has an, or city, they're a city, but they have an online system where like Jim sent that email out. They have an online tracking thing. I think it's way too complicated for Newton because, you know, we're 25, 5,000 people, whatever. All the departments get an email and you can actually see who's clicked on. They have to sign into an account and then flip through the application and check boxes.
I was just gonna say, I believe I can do return receipts by the email. If you, if the board would like, I will add those.
And so it keeps people, I guess, accountable in the two weeks between submission and hearing. You don't get any comments from the highway department. I'll pick on Mike. Cause I talked to him last weekend, but so be it.
Yeah. Cause this kind of, and I read this into the record when we heard this initial one. But yeah, we, the one time I've gotten anything from this particular department, the reply was, at this time, the fire department does not approve this petition as request for a home-based business until a full and complete fire safety review is made. But for one thing, he doesn't have the, he doesn't have the authority to not approve it.
Right.
And tell us why. Tell us why you don't approve it. And we could work with the applicant to fix it, to let them know.
Right.
You know, instead of after the fact. So that might be something, I don't know. We may want to think about that, but...
Mr. Chair, this is Barbara.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In the past, certain departments have not been real good about responding if they have an issue until sort of after the fact. But if we, since we have all that information on when we give somebody approval and say with these conditions, is there anybody actually responsible? I know it's not the planning board's responsibility to make sure that those can, some, they're going to the fire department or the building department. I mean, who's supposed to be monitoring that they actually do that? Cause lots of times they don't do anything.
My only answer would be, I guess it would fall under the board of selectmen to oversee the different departments that they have overseen. Jennifer, do you have any?
It's code enforcement, right?
Yeah, typically if a, like if a site plan gets approved, the building department should get notified of that approval and have that notice of decision from the planning board.
Oh, I thought we were talking about prior to the hearing. Did I mishear you, Barbara?
Oh, yeah. No, no, I was talking about afterwards when, when the board sets the conditions.
Okay.
And another thing, I don't know whether are we, once we set the conditions, are we allowed to give them like a shorter timeframe in which to go to these different people? Like maybe two weeks instead of three months or something?
Jen?
I've not heard of someone trying to do like, you know, if your conditional approval will expire in six months, but you put the condition that within three months you go to the fire department. I've not ever heard of a board trying to do that. It probably is legal, but I think it would be very hard to enforce.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd have to think on that one a little more, more to be honest.
That was part of what, um, the other thing that I had that it seemed like some of the input that we were getting or that I was hearing was that these other departments were crying about that being able to enforce, even though we've been putting on those, the criteria when we approve it, that they're saying that they're having a hard time getting, making sure that those things are done. But that's past us. That's, it got nothing to do with us. That's gotta come from the other departments, right? Cause it's in writing, so it's gotta be done, like you said.
Like I mentioned, that's almost like you take it where somebody just built a building, never came to the planning board.
Right.
For a site plan, but they're building a building. Code enforcement, building inspector, you know, possibly fire chief, but it's, it's beyond the scope of, of this board.
Okay.
Yeah. But simple, okay. Anything else on interdepartment communications?
I mean, in the end, while we're basically giving up, well, I guess a home-based business is a little bit different, but we're giving somebody the ability to apply for a building permit.
That's actually the, the best way to look at it.
And then a home-based business, and this is my opinion, that 80% of them are probably going to happen either way regardless of... We give them approval and most of the people here wouldn't know if, yeah, I was working from home or not and...
Yeah. But I liked how you worded that is. It's like, we're just giving them essentially the next step. So they have permission now to apply for whatever they need to get that business. So the occupancy permit, you know, those kind of things. Go ahead.
Just because I've noticed a patent that has started to appear in the home-based businesses that, that are coming before you is a number of them are businesses that have no walk-in clientele. They are either online only or they need to use their address in order to register their business. And if the, the business owns a vehicle, register their vehicle to the business. Quite often Mary Jo downstairs sends them upstairs to Migo. And, you know, I look at them and it's like, you know, it's really basically a home occupation, but they can't, they can't register a vehicle or they can't register a business unless they have that conditional use permit.
Jen, question for you on that. Would it, right now we have the, the home-based business application. Could we split off one, like have a separate one? Would it even be advisable to have something different for the home-based business that essentially has no business taking place at the home? Cause I know last time we had to kind of like give a waiver and...
You certainly could have a, I'd say a third tier of home occupations out of the home businesses, out of the home. You certainly could. There are plenty of towns that just by right allow home occupation, but it's defined so that you would never have any outside, um, portion of the business be visible. It would be like, it would essentially not be visible to any neighbor. That might serve as sort of a middle tier. It's really when you get into that outside storage and signs and clients coming in deliveries that most towns want to regulate.
Which we don't really allow.
Home-based business.
Okay. Which we don't really allow currently in the home-based business, other than the sign. So...
Right.
Okay, well...
I mean, there, there are several other ways of administering it.
Barbara, is that something, since you were updating all the applications and you wanted to take a peek at sometime?
Um, yeah, I mean, you may want to have like a separate form so that the board could look at it. I think at one point in time we did, um, uh, let me think here. I think we have a sep, we had an, an application for a home office, which basically when they'd make a, well, actually they'd put in a thing for home-based business, but then the board would look at it and say, well, actually this is a home, this is a home office. They're not really doing anything other than paperwork and their computer and whatever. And then they, I think you decided that, um, that didn't need anything. It was just if they were going to be actually conducting business out of their house, selling something or receiving packages or whatever. In the other place where I, I had a couple of instances in the other place where I worked, where they would have just an office, but the same as this. They, they really needed it to be categorized as a home-based business so that they could register their vehicles and they could get, um, whatever license they needed from the state or whatever. But those, those two that had, that I was part of with that, they were actually in a commercial zone, an area that was a commercial zone, even though they were a residential house. So that was a little bit different, but you know, you, you could have some sort of a, a form that's for that, that would be, basically it's like a home office, but we're gonna have to do it like a home occupation because you need to register and get an address for your business.
Okay, thanks. Something real quick?
Uh, I was just gonna say, it might be possible I can work with Ms. White. We, we could divide the home-based business application, just as I recently did, where I made a residential, non-residential. This would be, on one of the other applications, this would be home-based business with customer slash retail area and a home-based business that has no customer slash retail area.
Okay.
And that way, if they've checked one box, you don't have to find, you know, the parking isn't a requirement.
Yeah. Okay.
I think that's a great idea because...
Okay. Okay. Simplify it.
Yeah, then a lot of times I feel like we're wasting everybody's time by saying, yes, I work on my computer at home.
Yeah. Try to squeeze in hours and stuff like that. Yeah. Okay.
And I have a, what was the gentleman that came here for the garage doors? He's like, I have a warehouse down the road. The only thing I do is I park my truck here.
That, that, well, that's a perfect example. Can I just slip something in since we're basically discussing applications right at the moment? I'm doing up one, I haven't even mentioned Ms. White yet. We need a application for an amended site plan. We don't actually have such a creature.
Jen, go ahead.
You do not need an application for an amended site plan. You have an application for a site plan. There is really no such thing as an amended site plan. You apply for a site plan, but you may already have all, or a good majority of the information because you already have an approved site plan. You're still applying for a site plan.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
In that case, can I take the word major off of the site plan application?
Um, it should still say major simply because your policies and procedures...
It does. I have, I have somebody that needs to come before the planning board. And she's like, well, it's not a major site plan. They want to add a generator to...
Yeah. I think that's...
Then it would fit under your minor site plan requirements that are part of your policies and procedures, if it meets that criteria.
Yeah. Okay.
You do have major and minor site plan requirements.
Do you want, I would say, Jim, have a further discussion with Jen?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with Jen.
On that? And then if you and Barbara, with Jen, of course, that, I think the home-based business would be one that we could really just simplify and make everybody's...
It may just be as simple as putting on the, on the front page at the top, customer slash retail, no, no customer slash retail.
Okay. Great. Enough on that. The other thing, and, um, okay. Annie had asked for another non-public under section A, which is what we entered last time. I asked her if we had anything new. I wish she was here. I have the email right here, Mike. What's that? This email? Oh, yeah. So I asked her if she had any new information to add to the discussion. And then she said, yes, I do. It is not new information. It is making some conclusions or appropriate guidance to give our AA. None were made at our last meeting and I believe we parted with the intent to revisit at the following meeting. So the way I read that, we had had the discussion when we closed out the non-public, but it was still non-public, that we were going to, and this could be public, look into and possibly defining better the roles of the administrative assistant. What we, you know, so he, we had a better idea of what his job description entailed, I guess. I looked at everything under non-public. I can't find any reasonable ability for me to say that needs, that can be, never mind need, that it can be in non-public. Cause we're talking about the role of administrative assistant. So I can't find any way that we could do that under non-public. So, um, with that said, I would like to have that discussion now under the, the board of communications, or at least start the discussion. I'm not sure if you talked to Annie about it or if you have any particular issues we want to start with.
Well, I looked at, I looked up all that stuff, Mike, for us. And, um, you know, it's all pretty much listed in here.
The job description?
Well, basic in our, in our textbook. The basic role of an administrative assistant.
Yeah.
And then it also in the Newton, um, planning board rules of procedure, it just says, in accordance with RSA 673, uh, it's not semicolon, the two dots there. What's that called?
Colon.
Yeah, colon. 16. An administrative assistant may be employed to perform the administrative duties required of the planning board. The chairman shall direct the administrative assistant's performance of the administrative duties and confer with the vice chair to ensure continuity. So that that way there, there's, you know what I mean? Balance to, to what's going on to just double check in case you might be giving him something that maybe shouldn't happen or whatever. And as long as, this is what I was telling you about when I, when I emailed you about the communications. As long as this is going on, I think that gives us the checks and balances that we need to make sure that your base is covered too. Because I, I know I'm human and I'm fallible.
Yeah.
You are, every one of us is. So that would be a good thing just to make sure that we're doing. And you already said earlier in the meeting that you've been talking with Dennis about different things and whatever, like you should. So I mean, it's all pretty much cut and dry. As long as we're doing that and like you said, we're keeping a paper trail of what's going on. I think then basically we, we're covering our tracks as far as everything that's going on. So if something serious does come to light, like what, what was taking place in all those emails, then we walk in and we go, here you go. And then we can sit back and... And then we can sit back and the, the paperwork tells the story. We don't have to. And I mean, and that's end of discussion right there.
And just to, I, I, I'm not sure you know this, the, our emails, they're cloud-based too, I believe. So they're, I mean, I only have 118 emails from, on my Newton account, but even if I delete this, it's still on their server.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's why we, that's why I insisted that we had Newton emails.
Right.
Uh, because it never disappears. Cause I don't want to, when I, when I leave this job, I don't want somebody coming back to me three years later and saying, hey, write to no request. Mike, you gotta find these emails you did. It's like, no, they're all on the town site.
Right.
You know, so yes, all the communications, all the digital communications that Jim has with anybody is on there. And then of course, what we have.
Yeah. And, and you know, I've actually been through that already with Newton as well, a couple of years ago for a write to no, so. I, I just gave them a thumb drive previously and here's 6,000 emails. Every single email that I've sent when I was working with, you know, Jim and Barbara for the fire station.
It makes it really easy in the digital age.
Yep.
They comply with some of those. So I would, to answer your concerns, I would say that, um, yes, 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 and what I'll do better depending on is like, I guess, how much of this stuff that comes through do I, you know, I've been, the last two weeks you've gotten a little sense of it, but it's been important stuff.
Right.
So things that I've had to communicate either about the last meeting or to do with entities involved, you've been kind of brought up to speed.
Yeah, I see it. I, what you've, I don't really respond to you, so.
The sad thing is because of that, I'm actually having to do things that normally under that RSA, the AA would do.
Right.
I'm having to do, and it's got nothing to do with what the AA has done. You know, it's got other things, but anyway.
And there is a very lengthy AA job description.
There is, actually. And maybe.
I mean, assign that out to people?
Yeah. Why don't we all have a look at that again? Cause then maybe there's something that we can, you know, I, I think always seeing things with fresh eyes. And Jen, do you run into this in any of your towns? I know you mentioned last time about like getting too constrictive or prescriptive, but like what's your, what's your feeling on this and your experience with other towns?
Um, in other towns, some administrative assistants, just by their own credentials, are able to take on more, but for the most part, it's a fairly straightforward role of paperwork processing, obviously the board logistics and communication. But as far as review of application, um, most administrative assistants, planning and zoning administrators, depends on the title, may give advice, but that is where it begins and ends and their job description reflects that. I mean, my own role with your contract I have with you says, I will give you an applicant's advisory information about planning, zoning, site plan or a subdivision application, conformance to your own regulations and with state and federal permits. But it, again, states advisory, because ultimately it's not my call, it's not Jim's call, it's the planning board's call.
So when I talk to Jim about these things, like I expect Jim, if an applicant asks him a question about something on a plan, um, I expect him to the best of his ability to say in such a way, this, this the, you may want to look at, cause the board may have an issue with that. Or something along those lines. That's the advisory that I've asked be given. So we, so when we get an application, it's as complete as possible, you know?
Um, just as an example, your accessory dwelling unit applications does not require a floor plan to be submitted.
Mm-hmm.
But I know, and I know Jim knows, that having a floor plan is one of the easiest ways to convey that they are meeting the requirements of your accessory dwelling requirements. You know, is it, how's it connected, where's the parking? That's simply the easiest format. Doesn't mean that the applicant has to take that advice. And then always, I always phrase it, you know, this is advisory comments in any meeting or discussion I have with an applicant working through things. But that is giving advice, that is not certainly putting on a requirements to any application.
Yeah. So that's what I've always discussed with, with Jim about the advice or the, the questions he answers is, you know, okay, if there's something obvious, it's like, they're gonna like this, they're gonna want this, I suggest you may add this. And I think from our discussions, that's how Jim has approached it with people. So I've been satisfied with, particularly when it's in digital form and I'm seeing those exchanges, I've been, I've been satisfied with that, but do you have?
Because my job description requires that I review the application, I will point out to an applicant, and I've done it in the past, we had somebody that came in with an accessory apartment that was 1,400 square feet. That's just 600 feet more than we allow.
Yeah.
You know, I suggested that if they needed the full 1,400, that they were probably gonna end up being sent to the ZBA because, you know, this is what zoning actually allows.
Right.
They didn't, they didn't realize that, they were just, their house is 1,400 square feet, they were gonna raise the roof and put another story on and that was gonna be the accessory apartment. And I said, you know, go back to your engineer. My biggest comments that I make to people are, you need to seek competent legal advice or you need to seek competent engineer. Other than that, you know, some things come in that are blatant. Recently had a plan that came in, the building was 40 feet wider than the lot. And I looked at them and I went, you know, you gotta take that back to your engineer, some, something's wrong with the numbers. Nothing is necessarily wrong with the drawing, but you've only got 175 foot wide lot and you have a 242 foot wide structure. You can't, it doesn't fit.
And see, that's the type of thing that I expect in the application review or.
Right.
Plan review.
Or, you know, somebody submits, you know, people that submit applications that haven't been signed by both parties. Applications come in that I don't have an agency letter. I make sure all the paperwork is in order and to a certain extent, some of the details. But the floor plans are one of them. You know, this board wants floor plans.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we got enough of that. So what I'd like, I think it'd be a good idea to send out the current job description.
Sure.
And then, well, I'll get that. If there's something we see, um, we'll give feedback, you know? And I, yeah, I can't, I can't comment on hearsay that comes in, so we'll, we'll, we'll do that and we'll move on. And again, I think that would be, you know, these kinds of things are always a good thing for discussion, particularly when we have slow periods like this, we don't have, you know, all kinds of.
Oh, saves money, time and space on everybody's account.
Yeah. Okay. Now, I need to go into non-public and if I could have a motion, make sure I'm doing this right.
The one under E?
Uh, under E, yeah, that's the only one we're, we're gonna end up doing.
Okay.
If I could have a motion to enter non-public session under 91-A colon 3 comma 2, echo consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation.
I'll make.
Mike, before, before you vote, do you want me to stay on?
I do, it's gonna be quick, but I want to keep you in the loop.
There's no.
Right, well, we have to have the vote to go in.
I'll make a motion to enter non-public meeting according to 91A colon 32E.
Consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation.
Thank you, Mike.
Perfect.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Jim, call the roll please and then we'll do the.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
That's unanimous.